Good evening, students, staff, and community members. Welcome to the Second Annual Candidate Forum sponsored by the ROKAPA Social Studies Honor Society. My name is Avery Lindmark and I will be moderating the forum tonight. Assisting me in asking questions this evening are ROKAPA members Theo D'Orio, Noel Urban, and Jay Hazy, and Andrew Hershberger assisting with timekeeping. We welcome the candidates this evening, Darryl Benneker, who's running for the Lake Country seat, and Craig Thompson, running for the at-large seat. Thank you for your time and willingness for participating in this forum. Kim Schubert, the Swallow Seat candidate, and Anna Angeli, the other at-large candidate, were not able to attend tonight. To ensure a positive and successful event, we have a few guidelines for audience members and candidates. We will begin by allowing the candidates to answer one introduction question they received in advance. Each candidate will have two minutes. The first speaker, Mr. Thompson, was chosen randomly, and Mr. Benneker will follow. The first person who speaks will be rotated. Candidates will also be allowed to make a two- or three-minute closing statement which could be utilized to further clarify or expand on any of the answers in case they do not have sufficient time. The questions asked tonight were selected by a committee of students from those submitted by Arrowhead students. There will be two rounds of questions. The first round will consist of shorter questions with a one-minute time limit, and the second round will consist of longer questions with a two-minute time limit. The timekeeper will hold up a yellow card when fifteen seconds remain and a red card when time is up. The audience is reminded that the forum's purpose is informational and nonpartisan. The intent of the forum is not to support or oppose any candidates. We request that audience members be courteous and respectful of opinions that may differ from theirs. Please refrain from applause as this will decrease the amount of time candidates have to answer questions. Also, Arrowhead students will have the opportunity to submit questions anonymously with the QR codes at the signs at the front. There's one here on the back of the chair, over there.
One over here.
Over there. We will select a few questions submitted through the Google forum to be answered by the candidates in addition to the pre-made list. While we encourage students to ask questions by scanning the code, we also ask that everyone keeps personal devices silenced and put away as to not cause distractions. Other audience members will not have an opportunity to ask questions during the forum but may have an opportunity to chat with candidates informally after the event is complete. We will now begin with the introduction question, which was given to the candidates in advance with a two-minute time limit. Beginning with Mr. Thompson, what inspired you to pursue a role on the school board and what do you plan to bring to the table that will benefit our students, teachers, and families?
Well, thank you, Avery. And first of all, I just want to thank you and all the ROKAPA folks, all the students, and community members who have been here. Thank you, Darryl, fellow board colleague and friend for your participation. Your presence is a visible testimony to your commitment and respect shown to these fine Arrowhead students who have prepared this forum. This may be a suitable moment to share a quote that I've seen in a number of places, but one place is the Harvard Business School, and it's something like this. Eighty percent of success in life is just showing up. I can't help notice the absence of a few other candidates, including particularly my opponent, and it's a missed opportunity for our students to meet each of the candidates, for the candidates to meet new students, and to participate together in this exercise in grassroots democracy. What better way for Arrowhead students to learn positive involvement in our form and process of government than by observing adult role models in person and interacting with them? Again, thank you, ROKAPA. What inspired me? Well, I have a dad who was a school board member some many years ago, and I don't think I ever had that actually consciously in the back of my mind, but I have a dad. I was a teacher myself for a few years right out of college. My wife, Amy, was a teacher for five years, and my father-in-law, obviously my wife's father, his name is John Boy, and he was the principal of Brookfield Central High School for many years. So I have some role models myself. But as to why I'm running for the board, as the current Arrowhead School Board's longest-serving member, I bring a conservative perspective that focuses on kids. The Arrowhead Board needs experience, stability, integrity, and institutional knowledge. Oh, that time went fast. With nearly nineteen years on the board, I can provide what several in their first term on the board cannot. My opponent would add to the inexperience. At this time, stability and efforts toward building mutual respect in the context of a nonpartisan effort to govern are especially important. I represent the entire Arrowhead community without partisanship and respect the longstanding tradition of excellence at this school.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, and on to Mr. Benneker. What inspired you to pursue a role on the school board and what do you plan to bring to the table that will benefit our students, teachers, and families?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name? Good evening, everyone. My name is Darryl Benneker, and I've been serving on the Arrowhead School Board for six years now, and I'm seeking reelection for another three years. I have four children. I have a 2021 graduate that's attending UW Madison right now, a senior in high school, a junior in high school, and my youngest will be attending Arrowhead this fall. So first and foremost, I want to just express my deep gratitude for the opportunity to participate in this forum to discuss the future of our school. The responsibility of serving on the school board is one that I do not take lightly at all. It is a duty that requires dedication, compassion, and genuine commitment from every student, for every student. Inspiration, I have four of them. They're my four kids. I have a vested interest in making sure my parent voice is heard when it comes to decision impacting my kid's future. Never really thought of it, of doing it, but I did have the wake-up call when we, I was living in El Conwalk at the time, we were touring schools for my daughter, Ally, for kindergarten, and we were in district at Summit School, and the place was busting out at the seams. This is before they built their middle school, but I had seen makeshift classrooms in the hallway with cubicles there. It was just chaos, and that was just kind of a wake-up call for me of that, you know, taking a really a vested interest in ownership of my kid's education. And when my, you know, with it, you know, I investigated many options for enrollment and decided that Arrowhead was the best fit. As far as what, okay. As a candidate that I bring to the table is passion for education, the future vision of the community. I also bring a wealth of expertise and experience to the table, where I've worked as a teaching assistant at the University of Memphis, an adjunct professor at Cardinal Stritch, and I also worked for market research for over twenty-five years, where my main job is listening, listening to the audience, listening to the customers. And I feel that's what we need to do, what I need to do, or any successful board member needs to do before making decisions here representing the Arrowhead community. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Hi, everyone. I'm Noel Urban, and so now we will move on to the short-answer questions with one-minute time limit each. All right. Considering the increased use of artificial intelligence in education, how can the school integrate AI as a tool in our classrooms as well as mitigate any potential plagiarism or cheating? We will start with Mr. Benneker first.
Okay. In terms of AI, I'm a believer. It's awesome. It's awesome to have, and I think with technology, we need to embrace it. Back in my day, you know, I was the first one to use a computer for a typewriter, for typing. It was considered cheating. It's like, oh, you could do backspace, but you need to embrace the technology. Same thing with the Internet. In today's, it's happening with AI. In terms of with plagiarism and cheating, I think that's one of the things that we need to, I know our administration is looking at that and just trying to find the solutions, but I feel we need to embrace AI, but it is what's those guidelines to for education there. So that's my point of view on it.
All right, to Mr. Thompson, I'll repeat the question. Considering the increased use of artificial intelligence in education, how can the school integrate AI as a tool in our classrooms as well as mitigate any potential plagiarism or cheating?
That's a challenging question. As Mr. Benneker also already mentioned, the administration is very aware of this as a problem for potential plagiarism and cheating. Stepping back a little bit more, I know that technology will advance whether we like it or not. It always does, and we are going to have to learn as we go, I think, to cope with the challenges that confront us with it. There's always an upside and a downside to any technology, and the upside can be help of make our lives better and smoother and make things go faster, but there's also obvious downside, so I'm not an expert at that, but I sure would like to learn.
All right, thank you for that. We'll move on. Given recent concerns about Arrowhead scoring in reading sections, what is your plan to improve our school's standardized test performance? We'll go to Mr. Thompson.
Well, I know that we've been working as a board and as an administration on this for some time now, at least a year or two. Some of the scores are not up to Arrowhead standards, and that needs to change. There's no doubt of that. There have been usage of technology to help students individualize their instruction in terms of extra readings and readings to supplement other classroom instruction, and I know that every administrator and every teacher is full on board with getting reading as a focus into every classroom, not just the English classrooms, and not just the foreign language classrooms, but even science and math, reading is part of a focus now. So that's very important.
All right, thank you, and we'll go to Mr. Benneker.
Thank you. We're already making changes. I see two things that are happening that are positive. The first thing is Craig and I, you know, along with the other seven board members, sit on committees. One of them's curriculum where we are, looking at this hard, and I think we're implementing English eleven into the curriculum there, so to give, you know, more focus on helping improving those reading scores. I also think the block scheduling will be a benefit too, which will be kicking in this fall, where it will allow teachers, empower them, to have deeper learning, teaching, and understanding. So I think just with those two things right there coming into place, we'll see improvements in the reading scores in the long run.
All right, thank you.
In the age of constantly changing technologies, what role do personal devices have in the classroom, and to what extent should phone use be regulated? Mr. Benneker?
In terms of phones, like I said, with technology, I'm your biggest advocate for technology. Embrace it, don't fight it. With this phone here, one of the things is for us, for our graduates here, is set them up for success in the future. I can't tell you the number of times I'm listening to a presentation at work, instead of jotting notes down, I'm just thinking of my high school where I'm jotting notes down. I'm not really listening, I'm just copying everything, not comprehending. What I do, I take the picture of it, listen to the teacher. I feel that's one of the things that we need to in terms of embracing the technology. You know, in terms of the use of phone regulated, I think, you know, it's really up to the teacher of what we can and cannot do. There are some things that you need to embrace. I mean, I know my daughter in physics class, she used the rulers, like, okay, she had a ruler, she used the ruler app to measure things. We need to embrace the technology because it is going to be a continued challenge, and colleges will expect people to use the technology moving forward, and also in the professional area. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, once again, technology will advance whether we like it or not. It is going to happen, and so in one respect, we have to embrace it. At Arrowhead, years some many months ago, maybe a year or more, quite a number, we were made aware as a board that quite a number of teachers actually wanted phones, phone usage limited. And so I am generally a person who listens very carefully to what the administration and teachers say, and if they think that devices are being, are more of a distraction than a help, then we need to do something about that. So there have been many different ways to approach this. Some schools, you know, you got to check your phone at the front door. Other schools, we have little caddies in each room, and you check it in when you walk in the door of the classroom, which is what we're doing here more. I think that idea is important and helpful. It's all about not being a distraction in the classroom and being instead a device that can help. And as Darryl said, if it can help, let's use it. If it's a distraction, let's put it aside.
Thank you. Wisconsin Statute 11833E allows the required number of PE semesters to decrease from three to two if students are in a varsity sport. Would you support such policy as advocated by AHS athletes? Mr. Thompson?
We've had several go-arounds in my time on this topic, not with a statute change, but just as the concept. There are pros and cons. Some people will claim my kid, excuse me, my student, my student athlete is out for football, okay, or basketball, or soccer, or golf, or whatever it may be, and therefore they shouldn't have to take as much PE. Yes, but what if your student athlete is one of the hundred or more on the football team, and most of them never get into play? Or what if you, you know, maybe a golfer doesn't have as much physical exertion as a swimmer or a wrestler? There are a lot of things to consider here. A broader knowledge of a physical education is also helpful for everyone's future, not just knowing one sport, but knowing many physical activities to go in your future. This also touches, and I see a amount of time, but it touches on budget, because if we allow fewer physical education classes, we can cut a teacher, right? But is that the best thing? There are all kinds of factors involved in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benneker?
I would be in favor of cutting it from three down to two as long as that student athlete is in good standing and is, you know, it's signed off by the coach of, you know, playing sportsmanship, et cetera. I just feel, you know, there is so much to learn when you're in a varsity sport. There is great learning experience, and also just with students and more pressures today of taking more classes or, you know, especially with, you know, different requirements. I mean, we're requiring the personal finance, which I'm a huge believer in, but there are some trade-offs there, and if it, I'm in favor of going from three down to two as long as that athlete's in good standing, regardless of not playing or playing, as long as they're doing the time in practice, I feel that's something that should be waived.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Jay Hazy. I'm a senior here at Arrowhead. My first question is, how can we collaborate with feeder schools to prepare and transition incoming ninth years to navigate the challenges of high school effectively? Mr. Benneker, you're first.
Well, I think some of the work is already being done. I think it's, you know, just the communication. I know Sue Kesseta, our director of learning, does have conversations with the feeder schools in the junior high level in terms of making that smooth transition, that I think it's, you know, again, just communication, setting the expectations for those students.
All right, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah. This is not a new issue. We've been working on the eight-nine transition for quite a long time, as long as I can remember. So we, I know that the administration and certain teachers in the various departments, maybe heads of various departments, math, social sciences, science, do interact with the feeder school people. That's been happening for a long time, and it's very valuable, especially valuable, of course, in a district like ours, we're not a K-eight, I mean, we're not a K-12, so that's important. The administration, the board has long been aware of this. We've long been working on it, and we will continue to work on it. Other than that, once you kind of get right, the very first thing that incoming freshmen do when they come here is get in, they are welcomed in with the celebration the first few days before school, and that is a really wonderful way for kids to become a part of school and the school's activities. The name of the-
Wings.
Wings, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Wings program has been going on for six or eight years now, and it's a great program.
All right. Next question. How can we improve access to mental health resources in schools to better support students' emotional well-being and academic success? Mr. Thompson, you're first.
Well, first of all, let me give a shout-out to our Student Services Department. They're fine people. I respect them a great deal. They're always there in terms of counseling and being there for students who need it. If we had a budget to hire half a dozen more Student Services folks and counselors, I would be happy to do that. Kids are under tremendous pressure these days, unlike ever before, and so we, I guess we need to simply make it more well-known perhaps to some students. I hope that they would be aware of that. I think all of us in our high school experiences had a special teacher here or there who took us under their wing and made a very big difference for us, and I think anything we can do to encourage teachers to take a student under their wing, that's better. I don't have time to get distracted, get into a longer discussion about this, but I have voted to support teachers being able to be more active in the lives of kids. Others have not.
Thank you. Mr. Benneker?
In terms of mental health, it is a growing concern for all students, and I think it's, you know, I think we have a great support staff on board and have been, you know, phenomenal of helping our students, but sometimes they may need that extra push of where virtual care has been a huge thing, a huge asset, and I think if we had, like, dedicated areas, so if there is our students that see a counselor, you know, if it's through Children's Hospital or other health system, having that access to a room of doing that virtual care would be a huge gateway to, for success, for that to happen. And then also, you know, in terms of, I think it's also, you know, next year, we'll have the res- And then also, you know, in terms of, I think it's also, you know, next year, we'll have the resource period, which can be used in many different ways. And, you know, in terms of, you know, being student support services, being there for more students, you know, that's something to look at, you know, not just help with classroom things, but also mental health. I think that could be a big win.
Thank you both for those responses.
Now for a very controversial question, Barbie or Oppenheimer?
Is there a choice C?
Mr. Bennicker first.
I hate to say it, I haven't seen either one, but I could see myself seeing Oppenheimer. I just need that five hours set aside to watch the show.
Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Oh, wow, me, me, my, oh, no, seriously, I am an Oppenheimer kind of guy. I have a great deal of interest in history and particularly in the history of World War Two. And so I know that Mr. Oppenheimer had a profound impact on the outcome of World War Two. So I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Thank you. All right, to continue. What are your opinions on the newly introduced block schedules and how they will be implemented? Mr. Thompson, first.
Well, I'll say that initially I was a little bit reluctant and hesitant to adopt the block schedule. But as I try to make my practice, I listen to the administration and I'll listen to Mrs. Cassetta in particular and the other administration, who very, very, over some length of time, gave us good information, factual information, data from many other schools that indicated that the block schedule would be very helpful to our students. So gradually I came around and was, and am in favor of it. Along with what Mr. Bennicker mentioned, a key element of that is the resource period. There'll be a half an hour at the beginning of each day whereby kids can use that time to, for all manner of different needs, whether it be catching up with their homework, seeing a teacher, doing a lab that they missed, mental health reasons, whatever it is. So I think that will be helpful. And there has also been a great deal of focus and will be further focus on professional development for teachers to adapt to this and to improve their current practice if they haven't been doing it already.
Thank you. Mr. Bennicker?
My opinion, along with Craig, I was resistant and I did vote against it when it first came to vote. But after that, I did learn, did have some listening sessions with administration and also department leads. One of my big things is basically block scheduling, I think someone said forty-two percent of the classes haven't today. There's some where I was like, okay, how does this work for math? How does this work for more language? I'm not sold on it. And it did help me having those conversations with the teacher of, it's like, okay, eighty-four minutes. I mean, me professionally, I haven't heard enough to keep an attention for sixty minutes. So how do you have a student do eighty-four minutes times four? But the way Mr. Kurth has used it before is like, we're chunking that eighty-four minutes into three different areas where it's basically, I'm lecturing, there's work assignments, you know, during that time. And then at the end, it's like, okay, let's recap and, you know, kind of tie up the lesson plan. So I'm very confident and excited with block scheduling here. But it is one of those things that it took team collaboration to kind of figure out how this works to get, you know, people behind it.
Thank you for your answers.
How can the district continue to support students who are academically struggling or at risk of dropping out?
I think it's just, you know, the communication academically struggling, you know, I think the resource period, again, I hate to, you know, this is probably my third time mentioning it. This is a pivotal area to help with those academically struggling. I think it's, you know, just the constant communication with, you know, the teacher and student. If it is, you know, again, using the resource period or a study hall of getting those kids up to speed. And then also at the risk of dropping out, I think it's just, you know, sometimes some of them may catch you by surprise, but I think it's just constant communication that the teacher or the counselor that's assigned to the student, just seeing what, where things are at and just making sure that they're at a good spot. And, you know, the last thing anyone wants is a high school kid to drop out of high school and move on, so.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, speaking to what, what Mr. Bennicker just mentioned, thankfully, our district for now and for many, many years in the past has a very, very low dropout rate. That's something to be proud of. However, there are always kids that have trouble. And I think it has to be a team approach. We have very many caring teachers in our school. We have a wonderful administration and student services group. But we also must include, as I know our teachers do, all the parents in anything like this. Parents, it's parents, teachers, counselors, and students. So it's a team and we work together and we try to keep communication lines open and keep kids motivated and try as hard as we can.
Thank you. Vaping has continued to be a concern on campus. How do you plan to address it through reinforcement or education? Mr. Thompson?
I know we've talked about this at board meetings, there's vaping on campus, there's vaping outside the building, inside the building, in the restrooms. I know that we've put, I think, some sensors in the bathrooms to detect whether there's any vaping going on there. Education is an important part of it, of course. Vaping is harmful for kids, harmful for their lungs, it's harmful for their bodies, it's harmful for their minds. So education to, for kids to know that is very, very important. So it's, it's a multi-pronged approach, trying to detect and limit and restrict as well as help young people know what's in their own best interest.
Thank you. Mr. Bennicker?
I think we need to start earlier than high school, quite honestly. I mean, I have three kids that have gone through high school and, you know, I've heard the stories about the vaping in junior high. It's getting out of hand. It is, you know, very harmful, harmful, you know, echoing Chris's responses here. But I think it's educating them on it and pretty much having, you know, kind of putting the hammer down of, if your kid caught or babyed, there are consequences, making the children accountable. What, what extent that is, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think, you know, it's, it's not getting better. It's getting worse and it's getting younger. So again, I think it's starting at the feeder schools, quite honestly, and keep that level of accountability into the high schools.
Thank you.
Common complaints from students include the failure to improve the pool, leaking ceilings, soccer fields, and traffic problems. How will you go about increasing public favorability towards education funding to address these kinds of issues that have a negative impact on students? Mr. Bennicker?
Okay, we're gonna need more than a minute on this. I think it's, you know, in terms of improving it, I mean, looking at the pool, it is fifty-plus years old. I mean, we've done, I think our buildings and grounds group has done an excellent job of keeping it together with the pool, but it is a problem in terms of, you know, our big thing is, you know, getting referendums passed or, you know, to help with a few of these problems. You know, the traffic problems, that is a huge concern of, of mine because I've witnessed morning drop-offs here. It is a logistics nightmare. So we just need, I wish I had a straightforward answer here. I mean, basically, we need money to fix the pools, fix the traffic problems. And our board has been doing, been making a concerted effort of looking at referendum solutions for this.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, we've had on multiple occasions our state representatives in our school. I have met with a state representative over a cup of coffee on, at a table. We've done this several times. And we explain our financial problems, we take them on tours through the building, we show them, you know, the bucket, you know, from the leaky roof. And they look at that and all, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit PU'd at this. They shrug their shoulders and say, well, go to a referendum. Oh, well, that's great. But I'm sorry that I believe that the state of Wisconsin, even written in the constitution of the state of Wisconsin, has an obligation to fund our schools and I think they have to fund them properly and they've not been doing that. So what we will be doing is going to a referendum in November. And I think we have another question on that coming up soon, but here this evening. But it all takes money and we don't have it, we don't have the money.
All right, next question. How would you prioritize funding among the different departments at Arrowhead among STEM, fine arts, language arts, and other disciplines? Mr. Thompson?
This is a catch twenty-two question. I don't know how you do that. I mean, there are, there are kids who excel and need STEM. There are kids that excel in and need fine arts and language arts and sports and science. And you can't just say, well, we're just gonna cut one of these things, it can't be done. I don't know how you can prioritize among those things, quite frankly. They're all extremely important and we can't do without them. So maybe that's what I meant by a catch twenty-two question. I'm not going to use Jay. But we just have to do the best we can with all the programs that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Bennicker?
Yes, this is a difficult question to answer because there is all needs. I mean, basically prioritizing, you just kind of look at which ones are greater demand of the students and that's where the route you may take, but it is a challenge of funding these. You know, if it's through our school budget or, you know, if there's, you know, fundraisers that we can do to help with the cost. I know just, I'm amazed by the technology education area that's led by Mr. Christensen, where he has like companies that come and donate, you know, very expensive pieces of equipment. He does a great job of getting that community involved, bringing them in, doing tours of the school or of his department and getting that community engaged. He does a phenomenal job in that way. I mean, I wish, and his is, you know, it's an easy fit. I just wish we could do something for each of these areas and disciplines. But again, it's hard to prioritize in funding when our funding is smaller than what we hope for.
Thank you both for those responses.
All right, for our last question for this round. Many students have expressed problems with accessing everyday online resources and experience more lag in different areas of the building due to unreliable Wi-Fi connectivity. Do you support further investments in upgrading our Wi-Fi infrastructure for our students and staff? Mr. Bennicker?
Oh, yes, definitely, in terms of, I do, you know, wish we can do those further investments. And I'm sure, like, when we're, you know, building out that wish list of the referendum of, you know, it's not just building, but Wi-Fi is in that mix. But definitely, I mean, the Wi-Fi, you know, in here, it is, it is a challenge.
All right, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I think probably both of us are gonna start sounding like a broken record, but it, it comes down to money and we need money to do all these things and we simply don't have enough. Certainly, I support further development and connectivity of Wi-Fi. It's, it's a critical piece of student learning in this day and age, there's no doubt of it. But can we do everything we want to do? That's, that's the problem and we can't. So we have upgraded in the past few years, but these things always need to be upgraded more because technology changes. We understand that. But it's not easy to do if you have a whatever, hundred thousand dollar problem in front of you and you have to decide where's, where's that money gonna be spent.
Thank you for those answers. This completes round one. We will now move on to two questions that were submitted by the audience with a one-minute time limit.
Okay. With new changes in the scheduling for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year, do you see a possibility for later school and start and end times? Mr. Thompson?
As we talked about the block scheduling and moved to block scheduling, there really was no discussion of any substance about changing the start and end times. Quite a few years ago, I think it was when Mr. Lotus was still superintendent, that goes back a ways. But we instituted, you know, early and late flexible scheduling options. That was done, you know, sixteen, seventeen years ago, eighteen years ago. And so that is a, has been a very valuable piece of students' scheduling as long as they meet their requirements. And that is to have a, I think it's a B plus average and be responsible in terms of getting to and from school at a proper time. But no, in terms of new changes, no, I don't think we've had any substantive discussion of that.
Thank you. Mr. Bennicker?
I hate to be the very bear of bad news, but I don't see that happening, especially, you know, with bus schedules. For busing, there's kind of like a rotation of, we're shared amongst Arrowhead and the feeder schools. So we're the first route, then it's like one set of feeder schools like Lake Country and Swallow or Stone Bank. After people get dropped off at Arrowhead, they pick up those students, then other school districts are being picked up there. So, I mean, the main thing with bus schedule, I know, you know, it's a challenge that, of changing schedules to start later.
Thank you. With the board term lasting three years, what specific goals will you work on to accomplish by twenty twenty-seven? Mr. Bennicker?
Things that we want to accomplish, I mean, there's a couple of things, you know, just improving our scores. Conrad Farner, our new superintendent, you know, he's, I'm very impressed with him in, you know, his, you know, less than one year here and Mr. Kurth and the team. I think it is, you know, we said improving reading scores, improving scores overall to make us, you know, continue to make us a top-notch school, that's the one thing. Funding is another thing, you know, through referendum, we're hoping to get, you know, additional money there. Wish, you know, the annual budget of state funding, hopefully, that would be the ultimate wish of being, revisiting that and having that be more on a realistic level, you know, playground rather than using what was determined back in nineteen ninety-three. So again, scores and funding are the specific goals.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Well, the current probably biggest priority is a referendum and trying to get a referendum passed in November. Our school desperately needs additional funding and it needs serious maintenance issues and so forth, old facilities. So that's the first thing. Academically, we do have some scores in the reading area in particular that are lower than what, what should be here at our school, at a school of our caliber. So we are already begin, have already begun that and we will continue to do so. I think something's come up again and again at board meetings is the issue of bullying in our school. I think that is a problem and it's not, however, a problem that has gone unaddressed. I don't want to imply that it has not been addressed, it has been. But it's an ongoing problem and it's an ongoing issue that we need to continue to focus on. And then for my part, on the board itself and among the board, I think it's very important to increase the level of collaboration, stability, courtesy with one another and respect for one another.
Thank you.
All right, that completes round two. We'll now move on to our final round, which consists of questions with two-minute time limits. How do you see the role of students, parents, and the community in shaping education policy? Mr. Thompson first?
When we hired our superintendent, our new superintendent about a year ago, a little over a year ago, there were several in the running. And one candidate for superintendent of Arrowhead High School was rather dismissive of students. And that meant that she was, that person was rather dismissed by our board because we want to listen to students. And that's why I'm here tonight. Parents are obviously the most important partners of the students and need to be listened to as well. I remember a few years ago, I was just attending a basketball game at school here. And the ticket taker was Mr. Antony, who had been my daughter's AP Chem teacher. And we had exchanged some pleasantries. And then I said to him, "You know, I'm so appreciative of what you did to help my daughter get through that really tough class." And he said, "It's the parents. It's the parents together with the teachers who make, who create success." And I believe that. So in the community, of course, that's why we have things like this. It's a little bit disappointing sometimes that more people don't come out and that more people don't show up at board meetings even. But we try. And so I think we continue to try to reach out, to respond to emails or phone calls or whatever we get as promptly and as thoroughly and respectfully as we can from community members, parents, and so forth.
All right, Mr. Benneker?
Yeah, I see all three of them playing an important role. And I think it is just, you know, the communication too of, you know, talking to board members or talking to administration and staff of, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of shaping that education policy. I think it's, you know, just us continuing to look at where we can get better. And also, you know, just kind of finding those resources of how we can improve the education amongst our, our students. But again, yeah, I think it's, you know, the big thing is, you know, listening, just see, you know, looking at things of keeping, moving forward.
All right, thank you.
What do you see as Arrowhead's biggest challenges and how would you address them? Mr. Benneker?
The biggest challenge is, and not a broken record, is funding. It is, that is the biggest challenge. When you have money in your budget, there's a lot of great things that you can do. And I see, you know, if with, you know, if we don't pass the referendum, you know, Arrowhead is in a unique situation. We're on our own district, district for grades nine through twelve. We're like one of maybe a dozen throughout the state. So trying to pass a referendum, you know, when you have a K through twelve school district, it's easier because you have more kids, parents that are in that district, you know, more extended family. That is a big challenge for us. And I feel that is one of the things that if, you know, down the road, if we don't pass a referendum here at Arrowhead, I feel that is something that we need to maybe revisit of, do we need to look and see, does it make sense to be a K through twelve district? You don't see many people going from K through twelve and just going nine through twelve. You know, there is, you know, sometimes, you know, consolidations of that. But again, it is funding. And that's one of the things that I think we just, because there is a lot of referendums out there, a lot of referendum ask. Especially for myself as a resident of Lake Country, I have a refer, you know, our community is going to be asked to pass a referendum for a total of fifteen million dollars. On average homeowner, that is about, I think it's seven hundred dollar increase on your property taxes. In November, in Northlake, he's kind of in the same boat. In November, Arrowhead potentially, more likely, will be asking referendum too. So I'm hearing more and more the term of tax tolerance of, you know, community. And that's one of the things that we kind of really need to look at of, you know, in terms of getting the funding that we need to.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Well, once again, it is a bit of a broken record. But just to give a little context, some folks may know or may not know. But there was a law passed by the state of Wisconsin in 1993. Nineteen ninety-three, it was supposed to provide for a funding model for, for our schools. And whatever level you were funded at as a school at that time, over thirty years ago, that was the level you were frozen at going forward. Now, it was supposed to be a temporary model to last for a year or two until they were, the legislature was supposed to be able to get their act together and do something more permanent. Well, it's been permanent, all right. It's been thirty years. So for example, the Elbruck schools, on average, get about, I hope I'm exactly right on this number, something like fifteen million dollars a year more than Arrowhead High School gets. Now, how do you compete? Why? Because they were spending at a higher level back then than we were. Board even back then, even way before my time, was, was a very conservative, frugal board. And they tried to keep expenses down. Well, we've gotten punished for that for the last thirty years. And those costs add up. So one thing we've tried to do is focus some more attention on the legislative process. We've made a little bit of progress in that regard in that the funding level for all schools was raised a bit more than it has been in the past this last year in this last state biennial budget. But it's not nearly enough. So sometimes people will say, "Well, why don't you just run your school like you run businesses?" Well, businesses can increase their revenues. Schools cannot. We have a cap on our revenues imposed by the state of Wisconsin that we can't change. So it makes it, it puts us in a hard place. Expenses go up by inflation and more. Our revenues have stayed not level, but darn close and not nearly enough to keep up with inflation. So it's a funding issue. That's, that's our biggest challenge. And whether that's met by the changing the state's attitude or by a referendum, that's, one or the other of those choices have to be made. Both, one or the other or both.
Thank you. What role should the school board play in moderating classroom signage and course content? Mr. Thompson?
Oh, good evening. Philosophically, I place a great deal of respect and trust in the educational professionals who are at this school. This is near and dear to my heart. Those folks, under the auspices, under the authority certainly of the board, the board is the authority over everything that goes on in this school in one way or another. But if we are so foolish as to not respect the expertise and the knowledge and experience of our fine staff, then we're being foolish. Whether that has to do with signage or course content or not. We had a brief con, a brief discussion of this over at the last school board meeting. And there was some touching about course content and textbook selections and so forth. Yes, we should have the ultimate final say. But it appeared the discussion at, at the last board meeting was starting to go towards the school board saying yea or nay on every, every textbook. And I thought, wait a minute, that, that's not the way we do things around here. If you think that I'm going to have a proper ability to say yea or nay on this calculus, advanced calculus textbook or the French book or the AP Psych book or, I mean, you could, the list is as long as your arm, I am not gonna be put in a position where I say, "Yeah, that's a good book." No, that's not a good book. So the hard thing about these often is it's, it's viewed by some as black and white. None of these things are black and white. There are, there's much gray in between. And we have to be able to talk to each other and reason with, with each other and listen. My colleague Daryl started at the very beginning. We need to listen and learn and come up with a reasonable conclusion.
Thank you. Mr. Benneker?
Yeah, in terms of the role of play of the school board in moderating classroom and course content, I think it, our role is listen to, you know, we have to listen to all facets of, you know, the students, the teachers, the community, et cetera on this. You know, in terms of course content, I tap into the experts of that. So, you know, in terms of world language, I'm not that expert. But it is one of those things of, okay, you know, just seeing what they have out there. And it is for us as a board, it's maybe asking questions. You know, especially it's like, okay, if we see test scores dip down in English or something, you know, administrators are probably doing the same thing of like, okay, you know, what questions we are asking of, you know, how can we make it, that content better? You know, is there something that we should be doing? I think, you know, our role, you know, is listening. We are the ultimate decision makers. But I think it is collecting the information from all facets and also listening to experts in each of those areas.
Thank you. All right, for the next question. Given the increased prevalence of social media in the daily lives of teenagers, how do you plan to address cyberbullying in schools? Mr. Benneker?
Okay. Well, it is, you know, cyberbullying. And I think it's the fine line where, you know, as administr, you know, administrators, teachers, you know, there's so much we can do in school. But it's also educating, you know, our Arrowhead has these students for, you know, seven, eight hours a day. We don't have them for the other sixteen hours a day. So it is educating, you know, parents about, you know, the social media of what we can control that. But I know in terms of addressing cyberbullying in schools, I think it is one of those things of, you know, especially, you know, it's just educating the students. One of the things that I feel, the cyberbullying, in my opinion, ninety percent of them are, are fine. It's the ten percent that maybe that are causing the more harm in it. I think it is, you know, just kind of when things come up and when people see it, I think there is, you know, just, we may need to enforce stiffer penalties on it, make kids accountable for it. I don't know what exactly what that penalty is, but that's something I think it's working with administration and the board and getting input from teachers of what we can do to address this. But again, you know, there's so much that we can do in, with kids in school here. But it is, you know, there is a lot of responsibility for the parents too. And it is one of those things that, you know, with cell phones, we see that it's, you know, if people are abusing it, you know, teachers do take them away, you know, and have the kid, you know, pick them up at the end of the day. Or they do sit in, in the school office too of ones that are abusing that. And maybe it's enforcing that more. But I think accountability is the hugest thing of, you know, pay for the consequences. Because it's horrible.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, this, this ties into, cyberbullying is, you know, it's bullying. Bullying is bullying. You can control bullying in the school a little bit more in the hallways and kids calling names and so forth. There's a little bit of better control there. But as Mr. Benneker mentioned, there's not a whole lot you can do about what happens when kids leave schools. So that's very problematic. We have been presented as a board with a, a, a number of times by the administration, Mr. Bolt and Mr. Kirth in particular, have given us some understanding of what is being done to prevent bullying in our school. And part of it, I think, is consequences certainly. But part of it, I think, the administration's onto something very, very significant. And that is to get inside the head of the kid who's doing the bullying. Why are you, you know, not, to, to learn and understand what that child's home life is like, what's going on inside his or her head? Why are they doing the bullying? Does it make them, make that kid feel better, you know, by putting somebody else down and then I feel better about myself? I think our administration and our student services people are excellent at that. And the more touches, if you will, they can have with these kids who are doing bullying to help get to the root cause of it, the better off we'll all be and the better off our kids will be. And whether it's bullying and shouting names in a hallway or whether it's using, using one of these things, the root cause can be, you know, we can get to the root cause, then it affects both kinds of bullying. So let's try to get to root causes as much as we can.
All right, now time for our final long-answer question. What is your perspective on a potential referendum for Arrowhead High School? If our school were to go to referendum, what considerations should be made to gain the support of our community? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, well, to set the table a little bit and to understand the situation, I think, first of all, a lot of parents, or not, community members rather, maybe don't understand what's going on simply because they don't have kids in the school anymore. And probably seventy, seventy-five percent of the community is, is there. They don't have kids anymore in the school. And so it's difficult to reach out to them. But to be aware of what some of the issues are, we have security issues. Why do we need a referendum? We have security issues. In this day and age, it's tragic to say, but there are people out there who would harm our kids. We all know that. And we have kids running, walking constantly back and forth between two buildings. It's not the ideal situation. We have an entryway that although a few years ago, we put all the brand new locks on all of the doors, that is just, it's still inadequate. It's, it's not enough. A referendum would help us with that. We have building maintenance issues, a pool, rooftop units, HVACs, the roofs themselves. Mr. Farner took me into the south gym just last week on Friday and showed me something I was unaware of. He says, "Look up at the tiles up in the corner of the, of the south gym. They're falling off." And he, and he said, "You know, take a good whiff of the air. It smells musty, moldy." I think if I were trying to sell my house, I wouldn't be able to do it. The, the building inspector would not pass it. It's awful. It's unacceptable. Parking lots, all that sort of thing. Then we have competition from surrounding school districts. We have KM and Germantown, Conomack and Puyalkin in Sussex. They all are putting up marvelous facilities. This school has not passed a capital referendum, a capital referendum since nineteen ninety-nine. Okay, we've tried a couple of times and they, they failed. But we've not passed one for twenty-five years. The community needs to know that, okay? I don't know, I'm getting the red flag here. But we, we just need to get that word out. And I think one of the things we're doing is we're going to send out postcards very soon, pre-survey. We'll do a survey to try to educate the, the public on what we're gonna do, what we'd like to do, what the need is. And then from the survey, we hope to get guidance from the community. What, what is most important to, to you? Do we want to go in this, that, or the other direction? And as Daryl mentioned a moment ago, what's the tax tolerance? How much is this community willing to support in terms of paying for the things that we need? And then once we know that information, we need to engage every way possible, whether it's a PTO or Rotary Club, other service organizations, go to the feeder schools, do whatever we can to get people involved and get them educated.
All right, thank you. Mr. Benneker?
I'm all for, you know, we need to do something here at the school. And fortunately, the state funding, you know, annual increases, we don't see that happening in the very near future whatsoever. So it is referendum is the solution. And, you know, this summer, we did go on a tour of about a handful of different- And, you know, this summer, we did go on a tour of about a handful of different schools just to see what was out there. And, you know, we did see, you know, there were some nicer learning environments, you know, both the classroom, also, you know, things, you know, athletically where we saw, you know, swimming pools and different things. But for us to be, you know, a top-notch school, you know, we need to, like Craig said, you know, up Conomawak, Kettle Marine, you know, they're making some inroads on, you know, for new families coming out here, is Arrowhead still that, you know, place to be or is these other ones gaining interest, you know, both for, you know, students, but also attracting the best employees as well? We are, you know, one of the nice things when we were interviewing Conrad, he said, I'm six for six on referendums. I'm like, okay, well, let's, hopefully we can make you seven for seven. But, and we are approaching this very methodically and, you know, being very data-driven on this because, you know, for a referendum, whatever you ask for, it's, you're either getting that or zero. There's nothing in between, no matter if it's, you know, you're losing by one vote or 1,000 votes or one, 10,000 votes. So we are looking, you know, in terms of with our survey with school perceptions that's going out in, I think, mid to late April, we are going to see, because we need the community's backing on this. And we are going to find out what can we do to win and, you know, once we see that tax tolerance level, working with our administration board diligently, it's like, okay, what can we do to hopefully get a lot, you know, some funding for our programs and buildings? Because if we don't get that approval for the buildings, it's those programs that are going to suffer. You know, are we going to be able to offer, you know, multiple world languages? Just because maybe our budget's limited in other courses, so it is, you know, we need the community on this and it is tough with the community because only 25% of the lead have K through, K through 12, kindergarten through 12th grade children. The other 75% don't, so they're, they don't have as much skin in the game as others. How can we persuade those people and tell them how this is a win for them as well? Thank you.
All right, thank you both for those responses and all of your responses so far tonight. That concludes our long answer question portion. And now to finish up our forum, each candidate will now have three minutes to make a final statement. Mr. Bennerker, you're first.
All right. Well, again, thank you for all the questioning. It was a pleasure. Hats off to you all. I put together a great program. This was a great opportunity for you all and also for the community that was here tonight. I do, you know, especially when I'm looking at all you kids, I'm looking at my old, my two daughters. This year's the first time they get to vote for president. And it's like one of those things I tell them, you know, don't look at, it's hard, don't look at who has the most signs, who has, you know, things like that. Learn about your candidate, you know, learn about the candidates that you're voting for. Even if it's students, even if it's student council, learn about the people that are running, not just, oh, they're the most popular, I'm going to vote for them. Find out why they're running and how it benefits you. So I stress for you all to do your homework on, you know, before you're doing those votes, maybe you're voting this, this April, learn more about those candidates. Because it is one of those things that it is a privilege and it does impact you as a voter, but also those people that can't vote that are, you know, your younger classmates too. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennerker. Mr. Thompson, your closing remarks.
Thank you. I didn't quite get to this at the beginning of the meeting because I had something else to say, but I just wanted to give a little bit of biography about who I am and why I think I'm a good candidate for this office. I've lived in the Arrowheads District for 32 years, my wife of 42 years, and I have four children, all of whom graduated from Arrowhead High School. And I'm very pleased and proud of the education they received here. I'm a husband, a dad, a homeowner and a taxpayer. A good deal of my life experiences enabled me to be an effective board member. I have a bachelor's degree in science education from UW Madison. Right out of UW Madison, I taught science for three years in the Sun Prairie School System. Years ago, before we had kids, I also taught four levels of German language at Arrowhead for a semester. I have real experience in the classroom with kids, including Arrowhead kids, and I understand education in a way that a non-educator cannot. I've lived and worked abroad for three years doing extensive travel through much of Eastern and Western Europe. At that time, I learned and acquired fluency in the German language and have worked to maintain this skill. Experience abroad has given me a wider and more global perspective than most people have. I can appreciate views that differ from my own. It has been my privilege to serve on the Arrowhead Board for nearly 19 years alongside four superintendents. I served as a chairman of a Westbrook Church Board, now Elbrook Church Lake Country, for five years. I've been a member of that church for 40 years. I've also served on the boards of two other small nonprofit organizations. I understand long-term commitment, the value of stability and ethical responsibility. I understand the proper role of a good board, board member, how to establish and build mutual trust and respect and how to effectively collaborate with others toward common goals. I recently retired from a successful 39-year career as a financial consultant, assisting couples and individuals toward their retirement goals through effective planning and investing. I understand how to develop long-term relationships. I understand how to manage money as a fiduciary for others' benefit. I spent my career developing and maintaining long-term relationships and practicing prudent money management. Once again, I'll just say that I bring a conservative perspective that focuses on kids. The Arrowhead Board needs experience, stability, integrity and institutional knowledge. I bring those qualities to the board. And it's not just me saying so. I bring the endorsement of three past Arrowhead Board Presidents, Joe LeBlanc, Kent Rice and Bob Roche, as well as the endorsement of our recent superintendent, Laura Myra. I'll quote Laura, uh, Bob Roche. Quote, "No one will serve the Arrowhead School Board better than Craig Thompson and I'm proud to be his friend." Former Superintendent Myra, Craig Thompson has my strongest endorsement as an Arrowhead School Board Member and I can encourage you to vote to reelect him. I have, if you want, you want to elect someone who truly knows and loves Arrowhead High School, who knows this community, who knows how boards function, who knows and respects our administration and teaching staff, who is nonpartisan in his viewpoint, untethered from the money and political influence which has no place on our local school board, I ask for your vote. Students, some of you are eligible to vote for the first time, why don't you do? I ask for your vote. Parents and community members, I ask for your vote and that of five of your friends.
This concludes our forum. Thank you to Mr. Bennerker and Mr. Thompson for attending tonight and your time and participation. Thank you to our audience for helping make this forum a success. And please don't hesitate to take a printout from the front of the, I actually know where it is. Over there. Oh, there, right there. Showing the voting location for each, each district as well as the list of candidates. And of course, don't forget to vote on Tuesday, April 2nd from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.